I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Entertained a motion to clear out the meeting.
The move.
Second. First and second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. The meeting's act of posting on the door back there, care to read it? Uh, roll call, Tim.
Jim.
Jim. Chance, yep, Tim.
Yep.
My.
Yes.
Myself here, everybody's here accounted for. Uh, we'll now approve the agenda. If we have any... No recommendations, so we'll get any ayes.
Maybe we'll still get through the agenda.
Second. I'll say aye. And first and second to approve the agenda as stated, all favors say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Now, looks at the consent agenda, start out with the notes, you're my last minute. Anybody has any? Any questions about that or corrections, we will move on to your financials. Apparently quite much money in the operating fund.
They're giving their annual Allopit. Which made it a little less red.
Any other questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to the claims. So you said final spend, does that mean we're...
That is.
It's the final for last year.
Oh, for last...
But we probably won't see one for the new year until November. October, November, right there, so.
And that, the, uh, the one for Peterson Electric's garage, it's the track garage, not the garage, under construction. Power and work on that one.
Is it just getting a bit shaky or didn't have anything?
It, it has never had power. Uh, and we dug a trench by hand, which took a little longer. So, anyway, um, it's in good shape now.
Ready for the next scenario, or that scenario duration?
Yeah, it survived that.
Any questions on this? Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Second. And first and second to approve the consent agenda, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Figured out the portion of our agenda set aside to public comment, each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the Board President. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. We request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we advise you in that five-minute time period has elapsed. Please remember, this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of Plain Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised, there is no legal protection for any comments that are made. Public comment is an opportunity for patrons to express their concern or support with regard to school operations. It is not an opportunity for open dialogue with the board while in open session. Patrons are encouraged to follow Board Policy 1005.01 if they have a concern or complaint with regard to school operations. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
If there's no one else, I'll go. Melissa Dorr. Um, to everyone who's listening to me, I hope that you can truly hear what I'm saying. This is board, this is staff, this is community, this is everyone. We all share a common goal, and it is success. We can all agree that we want to see the next generations raised in a safe community with small-town values and a quality education. Success for our children, our families, our school, and our community. Towns that have no school will age and fade away. We each contribute unique and individualistic morals and mindset that causes us to not always agree on things, but the fact remains that we are connected through our common goal. We each offer a piece that is vital. Every piece contributes to our success as a community, and every member of our community is as integral as the next. Words are powerful, and the tone in which they are said drive home the message you intend. Words spoken in public that differ from words spoken in private and things said with insufficient action behind them, they will lose all meaning. Please understand that it is not my intention of any, to make any sort of personal attack on anyone with anything I'm saying. None of this is aimed specifically, but rather collectively. Um, following the meeting last month, I had the privilege to visit with a lot of fellow parents and members of our community. There are things that kind of weighed heavily on my heart, and I feel they need to be made known. And I hope that what I have to say will lead to further discussion, if in public or private. And I acknowledge that I understand this is not a question and answer. I simply ask for grace from the board, the staff, and the community. I'm very young and inexperienced with policies, and I don't know what I don't know, but I am committed to learning them. Uh, when I was a kid, my dad always said, "Good fences make good neighbors." And that's something that's really stuck with me. Uh, and it's, you know, widely relatable in the ag community, but it's truly applicable to all that will hear it. Where there is no respect, no respect can be expected in return. The presence of a school board implies a checks and balance system, and that's, the school is ran like business. And if I'm incorrect in this assumption, please correct me, but the school is of the top three largest employers in our community. When any business is contracted to do work of any sort for the school, please keep a respectable tone to adhere to any conversation in reference to that business, especially when it's a local one. Please choose your words wisely, and I ask that the community chooses their words wisely when it comes to all employed here. If success is the goal, honesty and integrity are the keys. In many of the conversations I had this past month, one thing that was brought up many times, and I say verbatim, there is a loss of faith. When addressing larger issues with the school board, and that's what that was in reference to, I encourage you to listen to these words and take them to heart, especially as this meeting is not the only one that is recorded. Uh, many parents watched last month's city council meeting, and they felt there was hypocrisy there. I'm not asking for any explanation, but I'm asking for the conversation to be had in public or private that makes addressing the school board more accessible to parents. And to finish up here, parents really would like to see their high schoolers able to enjoy a relaxed summer, or even one where they can gain life experience with more time to work with their fathers, their mothers, be at home or just to sit. I have no control over what is decided or discussed amongst you guys, I only ask that at some point these things be discussed. If good fences make good neighbors, then please mend any fences that need to be mended.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, we'll move on. Discussion items, number nine, COVID return to learn plan review.
We are required to review our COVID safe return school plan actually every six months. Uh, that's part of your S R fund qualification, so since where we spent most of our S R funds, we better abide by. Uh, so this was, uh, on our website last year, had to be approved last year. I just went in and changed the dates, to be quite honest with you, but wanted to put it before you again. And, uh, it, it hasn't been discussed in months, but anticipate that it probably will be discussed for many more months uh, over with regard to the requirements of the federal government. I don't have any recommendations really for any language change. I don't, it, it, it doesn't hamstring us or bind us. By anything, it's a local decision. If there were to be concerns with regard to, uh, safety of, uh, our school community, uh, that, that would be a, you know, a local decision that could be made with this as guidance.
So if these different color codes, when you get a point where it says you're supposed to wear masks, so if we say we're not gonna wear masks, can they come back and take the, like, demanding money back?
No, you can, you can, uh, it, you can change the language on this. That's entirely a board decision on what you feel is appropriate.
So if we approve it tonight, that doesn't mean we have to follow the same thing all day?
Yeah, yeah. If things were to get hot, I would, I would guess that you'd probably come together, um, maybe in a, uh, a, a special session if necessary, you know, to discuss what you think an appropriate response would be. Just has to be reviewed, it has to be on record as having been reviewed.
Okay.
Alright, number ten, transportation.
Do you have a copy of Mr. McCabe's recommendation for a free bus route? Uh, system goes, not everybody on each of those routes, uh, would be every day, A M. or P M. Uh, all those families will be notified, all routes will be practice-driven with times, and so it usually takes about a week, and our families know this, it usually takes about a week or less to kind of wiggle into, uh, the times that families can expect within minutes. Usually within minutes, especially like first family or two, because the, the buses take off the same time every day. And so it would only be if they're delayed on the route for whatever reason, and I believe that's probably rare. So, Mr. McCabe, I, uh, he, he tells me that, that this really is not too dramatic for anybody uh, with regard to times, but yes, some families will have, uh, a little more time, uh, in the morning and, uh, and after school.
So Jake here, is it Brunswick?
Yes.
That's where everybody meets in Brunswick, so?
Yes.
Well, this is short with the rest of it. Guess another thing is, if, if we do it and it doesn't work out, there's no, no reason we can't.
Absolutely, we'd have the flexibility to do that. Uh, uh, again, we're thin on drivers, he's got a couple leads on to, um, usually as soon as he, he's gonna, he likes to slow-play the requirements. And so I, I took a phone call last week, uh, and sent it to Bob and saw Bob this morning, I said, "Hey, did you have the conversation with so-and-so?" "Yeah, yeah, I did." He said, "I only, I've got..." So, you know, the, the, the school bus permit with the C D L and such, I mean, it does require a bit of a commitment to get to that point, and, uh, with the physical and the two-hour safety training, so you, you don't want to scare him off with that. But most folks know, uh, that, uh, there's just a different level of safety and security that goes with driving a school bus, so. Um, he's got a couple leads, if he were, if we were successful at even one of those, he could conceivably go back to a four-room, uh, system. And we're always good in the fall, and when mashouts go south, it gets damp. But, uh, he's, he's ready to go, and, and he recommends this, and as do I.
I'm gonna let him, summer maintenance up.
Hey, just listen. That's rooftop unit humming, is that not Byron?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, Byron's spent a couple of full days here in the past week, and so he knows precisely, uh, where we are at with our timeline for full, full air throughout, everything that's expected that we're paying for. So Byron, you're up.
Alright. Well, we set the last gym unit, pirate gym unit this morning. Uh, as of two o'clock this afternoon, we add power to it, so it's going through its heater cycle, so that one will be ready to start within the next twenty-four hours. So, as Darren alluded to, this half of the build from the south to here is air-conditioned. We did get that unit running today. It's not under, every room's not under full control yet, but we do have air. The goal is Thursday to start up that half and, and pirate gym. Insulators are coming for all that ductwork on the roof starting tomorrow, so the pirate, or the tartan gym will be the last one that will start up. The locker room, we got ready to go today, so it'll be in this next Thursday, this coming Thursday timeframe. We'll still have some tweaking to do to the temperature controls and all that as, you know, for a couple weeks yet, but the main thing is by the time school's ready to roll, we'll have air conditioning. The electrical, obviously there's no brand-new transformer yet, there's no switch gear, but we're using, we have enough capacity back here, so we're using the old electrical to power everything, and we're, we're fine. We're not in any trouble at this point. So, once we get all that gear, we'll plan a shutdown and start getting it changed out. But in the meantime, you'll have full air conditioning and, and all that capability. I know it's, it's, we're in the push, but it's looking very, very good for us right now to get it done. The ceilings are back together now, so we're, we're just right at the edge of getting, getting out of here and letting the kids come in, and then we'll just be kind of fine-tuning the system after that.
So you'd be able to do that switch over on a weekend or a...
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what we're looking at, is weekends or, you know, during, you know, if we had any kind of break at all, you know, make, make those cut-overs at that time. Still haven't, we haven't really gotten confirmation from the power company when they think they're gonna have a, uh, transformer. I'm still pushing for them to go ahead and get the pad done now while it's nice, so that at least that part's ready. And then we can get the underground conduit out there, so that when it does arrive, at least we're a little bit ahead of the game. It does create a little bit more work for the electrical side of the project, but it is what it is. I mean, with the supply chain situation like we have, it's, you know, that's what we gotta deal with. I've never seen anything like it in all my time like this, but, but the good news is we will have air conditioning for school. We are at that point now, where I can confidently say we're there. That's why I wanted to get this unit, at least the first one up and running, so we can get it going. Uh, it's gonna take probably a good, for this area, two or three days to pull the humidity out. I mean, it looked like we had a garden hose coming out of that unit all day long, with pulling all this humidity out here. Any questions of anything else, or you just made a bunch of kids happy and all that? Yeah.
Especially Bella.
Alright, yeah, yeah. It's, uh, you know, this, this last couple weeks of a project is always very stressful, because I know, like, for Gail, you know, he's kind of like, "Whoa, where are we gonna get there, are we gonna get done?" And, um, you know, it always looks like, "Oh, man, it's a mile away," but it always seems to fall together. And the group, the group that we have here, subcontractors, have been doing an awesome job. They've been committed, staying up with it, getting it done. You know, like I asked last Wednesday, I said, "Hey, I wanna have this unit running Monday." They pushed right through, and this morning we got it already and started it about ten o'clock this morning. Well, that was, that was a plus. It was kind of, for me, it was kind of a trial run with everybody, just to see how quickly and how prepared they were to get it done, and they pulled through. So by the end of the week, we'll have the rest of that ready to go and start it up. But we'll wait till the insulator's done on, on the tartan gym, then we'll get it started.
You turn the principal's office on last.
On last? Okay, alright. We gotta let that glue dry a little in there, right?
Get Tammy's part done.
Okay.
Um, it's, I, I've been amazed at what I've seen. I had a lot of summer projects with you guys. This has been, uh, just, and none of them have been pork by any means, I mean, everything's always been done. Uh, but Byron has orchestrated this just, just magnificently, when, you know, these folks from Model Electric are spectacular. Uh, the folks that run McCray, and that's pretty cool, it's, I mean, it's just, so everything that Byron has said, and I've been nervous several times going all the way back to June, and, and he's been cool, pun intended, throughout, and just always confident, "It's alright, it's okay, we're gonna get there, we're gonna get, it'll be, it's gonna happen." So, so these folks have, have just really, really been, um, good to work with. Gail and his crew, again, as always, deserves tremendous kudos. They had to work in this building without air conditioning. Now, it's okay, they can do it if they never have had to, because we've had to shut it down for all the summer here. So they work in this building, you know, without air conditioning, he won't get his halls waxed out, come at Christmas time maybe. That happened a couple years ago too, maybe it was even last year, but, um, so they've been champs to, to be patient and to work around. And, uh, so we've just been blessed with really, really good people, and, uh, we, we look forward to hosting that first event in the, in the gym, in both the gyms, that's where you'll, folks will notice it, because that's where our guests come. So, it's, uh, it's certainly been a good, a good summer with facility advocates.
I just wanna give kudos on, I don't know what crew it is, but I was up on the roof one day, Dr. Allen, it was one of those mornings, it was ninety degrees by ten o'clock, they're in the nineties, and those guys were up there on that block.
Yeah.
Tough working, I remember, I remember sweat, they were, they were up there all day, and it was more than one day in a row that they had to do that.
Yeah, that's tough up there, but they haven't...
They weren't complaining.
They haven't complained yet, so, there's a lot of stuff on that roof when you get up there and really take a look at it, I mean, it's...
Boltmans are, have been spectacular.
Boltmans been great, yeah.
Sean, uh, Klassen is spectacular out at working with his crew, I mean, just, just good people all around. And nice folks, pleasant, you know, uh, so I've, I, yeah, that's, you guys have been very, very good.
Well, the goal was to get it on for school, and, and right there, I don't foresee, you know, unless something, you know, catastrophe happens, but I don't see any reason why we won't be ready to have full air conditioning most times school starts.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Kelly has a big check.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I hear, so come to the board, he's, he's the way we pay him.
That's pretty cool.
Thank you.
So was he telling the truth, or is he just wanna check?
Just wants to check. He doesn't have all of them yet, so.
Do you have any more on?
Uh, let's see, Kyle and Jen, sorry, the, the carpet is done, I sent you a picture. Check, check out Mr. Schmidt's office, it's the same, so I'll give you the picture I sent you, and so, very nice. Next year, we may consider the music room over in the elementary, that's the only bit room left over there with the original carpet, I believe. Your spare room and title room have something newer since original. So we may ask you to consider that space next summer. Otherwise, yeah, we're...
Well, we met, building grounds committee met with Dave Horzel in the garage prior to this meeting, and had talked back and forth on why, why it was taking so long, and how long it was gonna take, and this and that. Everybody has their reasons and different stories. He, he told us that he would have the thing done, could have it done in a week if we agreed to pay him more. And I told him that we couldn't make that decision as a committee. He really doesn't wanna start till we make the decision on what we're gonna do. If we agree to his advanced payment, he will promise his company that he will start on it. He would start on it tomorrow if we could guarantee it. I told him we'd have at best a special meeting in two days. So, he is gonna sit and wait, see if we decide to do that. Otherwise, he's gonna have to put off until he doesn't go in. If we wanna wait until the, the school shop class can help him, because he's gonna start another job, and doesn't go in, don't go back here. And that job's out of town, so he can't travel back and forth and see how that handles it. So, we're kind of a situation where we pay him more and get it done quick, or we're, we're still gonna be in the book. So we'll see how the shop class works out with it. So I don't know if we wanna do a special meeting in two days and discuss this and going on it. I think Tim and Jam are on board, do a special meeting in a couple days and discuss some of that.
Sounds good.
In the meantime, I'll through the, um, Mr. Jude, and, um, I invite him to come and take a look and see where we're at. What, and what, uh...
What he could do.
What, what's left, yes, and, um, his last conversation I did have was in this construction class, and I don't know for sure the numbers that we have in there or who it is, but he said those kids are generally, would be, would conceivably be ready, uh, to go to work, they wouldn't need a month's worth of instruction, for example, or safety tool, safety training and such. So let me, uh, reach out to him, and then I'll get back with you, Mr. Schouzer, and then we can talk about, uh, date and time maybe for the board to make a decision.
Okay, I mean, the sooner the better, because he's, he's waiting to go somewhere else.
That knows.
Do you have a time and a day in mind? Are you talking Wednesday night?
Well, can we do forty-eight hours from now, or forty-eight hours from when you notify the paper, or what?
No, but we're, we'll, we'll have to visit with you tomorrow and determine, make sure we have proper notice.
It won't be before, probably noon on Thursday? Could you guys do a minute on Thursday?
I just need four.
Okay, so we'll shoot from that and see, does that sound good? Okay, I'm your issue. Okay, alright, so, please have notifications come out on the... Okay, I should take care of the summer maintenance. Uh, Nebraska Farm's school and nutrition program.
Uh, this is a grant offered through the Department of Ed, um, and I gave you just a little bit of details on that. It might be something, but I, I might start looking into just a little bit more, you know, we've, we've got a nice greenhouse out here now that it's not massive, and a massive garden by any means, but just, um, um, it, it's, I, I don't have, uh, statistics for you tonight on, on this, this many schools, you know, in, in our area or even in Nebraska participating in this. It's not necessarily something to save the school district money, tender, uh, but, uh, something that I think is worthy for us, we have a terrific ag program, uh, of course, we're an agricultural society, we got kids that would probably be, you know, pretty competent in, in what it would entail, so, um, we'll pursue this, you know, maybe a little more and, and just kind of, over the course of the next few meetings, maybe, um, just provide a little more detail about what this might look like if we wanted to apply for this grant.
So how much hassle will it be for the cooks if we say we've got some pork and beef going?
Yeah.
You know, and not that somebody has to donate the whole thing, where other people can donate money towards it, to apply it.
Yeah, yeah, it just makes some planning.
But if they have it for a while, then they gotta go back to the state's managed stuff, and then we get another one come in, I mean, has that been a big hassle for them?
Yeah, that'd be a good freezer. But yeah, you, with, with something like that, you, ideally, you've, you've got some commitments, some, uh, long-term, and so you can plan, you know, just a, a little bit better, usually not, you know, just somebody shows up and...
One time, you know?
Yeah.
Any questions on that? Okay, number thirteen, review board policy six oh, six one oh point oh one, six one one point oh one, six one one point oh two, and six one one point oh three.
These fall within the scope of the principal's offices, uh, pretty closely, so, um, if there's anything, any questions that you might have with regard to them, or, uh, anything that Kyle or Jen wants to share, I, I've gone through them, I didn't recognize anything that, uh, that needs revision.
Any questions on that? Okay, number fourteen, board development. This is, uh, Fundwell's Voice Service Page, one nineteen to one twenty-two. Is it cracked up? One second here that this pretending, uh.
Yeah. Just because of the, the, the nature of the body, but, still, um, still good for viewing.
So that meeting, special meeting, this is kind of on that a little, to talk about the real, the deadline of work for this.
Yeah, that, that came into play quite a bit more because of COVID, so all the rules changed, uh, or, or the open meetings actually changed quite a bit with regard to COVID, so, video conferencing, um, and regs for video, rules and regulations for video conferencing when necessary, which that's hopefully and probably, you know, in our, in our.
For a spur of the moment, I'm sure it wouldn't really be very easy.
Yeah, or, or necessary, really.
All right, we'll move on to action items. Number fifteen, discuss and take possible action on Board of Education sponsorship of Teammates Mentoring Program.
I think Mrs. Wernicky is here, and Mrs. Johansson? Come and visit us once a year? You're welcome to come more often, of course.
I just wanna say thank you on the guidance board of directors for generous support of our program. Because when we first started Teammates, we had to spend a lot of our effort fundraising, and that takes a lot of time, and you're always begging for money. And in talking to the boards in other towns, they still are doing fundraising a good share of the time, and we don't have to. And that is such a blessing for our board. We can focus on doing activities for the kids and supporting the mentor program and stuff. So, um, she's got the statistics. I just wanna say thank you. We so appreciate it. I think we're starting our eighteenth year now, so, we've been around for a while and, and hope to continue for a long, long time. It is, it's a, it's a good program. Thank you. Thank you for your advice so far. It's appreciated.
Have you been in charge all eighteen years?
Part, she's, yeah, she started it. Yeah.
All right, I just thought I'd give you, let you know Teammates is alive and doing well. Uh, we have, in the last year, we had thirty-eight mentees and twenty-eight mentors, and we had five mentors actually mentoring, two, Deb is one, actually mentoring two mentees as well. Uh, we still, um, have five kids that, um, have been in the program with no mentors yet. We try and get the upper kids with mentors real soon. And, but these five kids are on my hot list, you know, and we will work at getting mentors for them as soon as I can. Um, uh, at the end of the year, we actually had five new applicants to be in the Teammates program. So, uh, kids are wanting to be in it, you know, and so that is good news. And I, I did some counting, and last year, we had over eight hundred mentor-mentee contacts throughout the program. So that, that's quite a few, quite a few. And so we're doing well. Uh, we had kickoff, we, uh, did bowling, which is the kids' favorite thing. Uh, movie night, we tried, and spring game, oh, the spring game, we got to send our juniors. We didn't, uh, the seniors, did we have a senior? I think we might have a senior go. But juniors and seniors every other year are something that we plan on doing, and we were able to send, uh, those kids off, um, to the spring game, and they really enjoyed that. And, uh, and of course, we ended the, the game, uh, year with our spring gathering and playing, um, or mole and just a lot of different fun things. So the kids are, um, like I said, they're loving it, and the mentors are great. We, um, we'll have some shuffling of mentor-mentees with just natural kids changing, moving, and that kind of thing. But we thank you. The, the support you give is really helping a lot of kids, so. Any questions?
What do we, what do we give? We're talking about.
Two thousand.
We did, yeah. And are you doing okay with the thousand?
Yes. We, we are totally appreciative. Totally, totally, so.
Well, thank you for all of the questions.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to budget one thousand dollars to support the Plainview Public Schools Teammates Mentoring Program.
Okay, there's the first and second, uh, for a thousand dollars. Any more discussion on that?
Yes, I don't wanna, a little bit, so I don't have to jump in so much in a couple of years. You know, I'll be like a hundred bucks or something like that.
Yes, it's your fine, yeah.
That's, I, that's kind of why I asked if they had enough. If the thousand covers your expenses, pretty good. Are you short? Or does a thousand dollars cover your expenses?
I think we'll do fine.
That, yes, that's fine.
You're fine?
Yes, yes.
We gotta vote on this anyway.
Thank you for asking.
Discuss, but we can't change the motion.
Okay.
All right, myself, yes. Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, Chance.
Yes, Wyatt.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Number sixteen, discuss and take possible action on reducing bus routes from four to three. Okay, motion. I'll make a motion to approve reducing our bus routes from four to three as presented.
Second.
Second, that.
Okay, first and second, is there any more discussion? Okay, what?
Yes.
Yes, Chance.
Yes, Jim.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries six zero. Uh, discuss and take possible action on updating our web filter for six thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Oh, yeah.
Must be the new, the new crop.
There you go. There's the copy given to the new copy.
Maybe a little more.
Right in the fact.
Well, yeah. Hope you approve it, because it's already been installed.
We, we discussed it last, uh, county meeting. There's really not a lot to discuss. It's actually gonna be a.
I should've put on last month, but it was the only action I was gonna be asking for money, and I wanted to go one month without any request for funds and so on, pushing them.
It's already installed and cheaper than the old system.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the line wise to provide our web filtering service for three years in the amount of six thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
For second, second, that is, is there any more discussion on that? All right, Jim? Yeah?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes, Tim.
Yes, Chance.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries six zero. Number eighteen, discuss and take possible action on the first of three annual huddled subscriptions for eight thousand dollars. Motion.
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the annual huddled subscription service for eight thousand dollars. Second.
First and second to approve the subscription for eight thousand. Is there any more discussion? Myself, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Jim?
Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
Motion carries six zero. Discuss and take possible action on renewing NRCSA membership from two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, school year, for eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll move to renew the NRCSA membership from two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the amount of eight hundred and fifty dollars.
First and second to renew the NRCSA for eight fifty. Any discussion? Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Deb?
Yes.
Jim? Motion carries six zero. Twenty, discuss and take possible action on appointing Dr. Darren Harrell as state and federal programs director for the district.
We'll make a motion to appoint Dr. Harrell as the district federal coordinator.
Second.
What is?
It's a federal requirement for who is the district representative. Yeah, yeah.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Chance?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah.
Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss and take possible action on setting classified subrates.
Hey, um, we, we always have a, a bit of a variance on, you know, who, who we maybe call to come in. So for example, when we call Jane Denlin to come and work in the, the office, we have for years and years and years and years. Uh, or if we have a new para, uh, I, I just would appreciate a range of, of approved by the board, and then, uh, your trust in, in my decision on what we would pay a, a classified, uh, person. Uh, we, we have, but maybe a handful of folks who would be subs in classified positions. Could be kitchen, could be para, could be, uh, in, in our offices. So, um, depending upon how long they have served us, uh, or if they have some particular expertise, but usually it's just a length of service. So if we've got somebody that's served us for years and years and years, I would like the authority to maybe pay them a little higher of a subrate than somebody who were just hiring for maybe the first time to come and, uh, and work for us. And so, um, we've moved classified rates somewhat significantly last spring with an intent to maybe get everybody to that fifteen dollar rate, uh, next, a, a year from now. And so this range, I thought, kind of fit within the, that, uh, that, that scope of consideration.
What's the payment rate right now for, for that position?
Oh, they've, they've been like eleven fifty to twelve. So it, it would be somewhat significant, but all of our classified rates, we did move a pretty good percentage.
I'll make a motion to set clas, classified subrates in the amount of thirteen twenty-five to fifteen dollars an hour based on experience. For second? First and second to set the rate at thirteen twenty-five to fifteen dollars. Any more discussion? Uh, I'll vote, I say yes. Deb?
Yes.
Jim? Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Okay, we're now at the reports. Um, I'm just gonna make a comment on reports. We know in the past, our reports with that would be more of a discussion item than a report. Basically, a report is just them reporting us what's going on. It's not for us to discuss why, or we don't like it, or do like it, or whatever. I'm not against asking a question if you have a question, but it's not a, it's not a discussion. If you don't like it, yes, that's a discussion we have outside this meeting with whoever's in charge of it, so. So when we do our reports from now on, it'll just be, uh, listen to the report, and if you have something, you know, you don't understand, or would like more information about, or something like that, that's fine, but it's not a, a back and forth. So, so I'll carry on with the activity direction.
Everything got kicked off today, so fall sports are underway. We have kickoff a week from Friday, and then competition starts a few weeks from Thursday, so. It's about to get wild.
Homecoming?
Homecoming. Homecoming will be September second. Everything's gonna be done on Friday night, uh, so we don't have anything going into the weekend or anything like that going on during the holiday.
What were your options for homecoming?
You had, uh, August twenty-sixth, September second, or
Twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth and October.
Thirty, September thirtieth.
Thirty is on twenty-third. And one of those, we had cross-country meet that day, and the other one, we had Harvest to Harmony, and we send the band out at five o'clock in the morning, so. This was the only one where we had a home volleyball game Thursday, Thursday, home football Friday, and nothing else going on, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, principal?
We have orientations in open house this weekend next, otherwise, um, short and sweet with the things to share with you.
Um, the president's report, I've said enough, so I'm done. Twenty-five, superintendent's report.
Okay, I'll be inviting Mr. Schausser, Mr. Prom, Mr. Rasmussen in the next couple of weeks to start to, you know, plan for the budget, which I've already got quite a bit of progress, uh, on that. As you know, evaluations come in the twentieth of August. I'm gonna close a day or two ahead of time. That's what really unlocks most of the work. And sometimes, you know, we can certainly meet prior to that, but we definitely wanna meet after that, um, to, to have something to present to the full board for consideration, et cetera, in the meeting. There's some new guidelines and some new timelines with regard to preparation of the budget. You will probably won't notice any of that. Uh, there will be a joint, uh, county meeting at this, at the Plainview Library for, uh, all, uh, taxing, uh, organizations that, that increase, uh, over the previous year, uh, threshold amount. We may or may not be in that. That will depend on you, uh, and what budget that you're going to adopt. And so it's just, it's just another opportunity, uh, for public to participate in, uh, the process, uh, of, of, um, information and discussion, uh, with taxing agents. So that, um, it may or may not be something that we'll participate in a little more certainly as we get, uh, into and through this month, and certainly early into September. So I'll be contacting you to look for some times, uh, to do that. Your welcome back dinner for staff will be next Tuesday, a week from Tuesday. And look, you can see the staff there that are gonna be, uh, recognized for their service to the district. Nicole Clemons at ten years, Paige Gadsinger at ten years, Whitney White at ten years. Uh, they all have a, a pretty doggone nice certificate produced by Mr. Curtis. Uh, Chad Schumacher at fifteen years, he has a, a nice little crystal apple. Uh, Gail Wolzel, Gail Celine, uh, in the past, those were, uh, twenty dollars clown cash, twenty dollars cash. Uh, and then Chad committed twenty-five years will receive an extra personal day. Uh, so that's, that's in policy. Uh, and, uh, that's something that Mr. Schausser will, will recognize and present. Uh, Country Club a week from Tuesday, uh, at, uh, five-thirty. I've arranged with Mary's to cater that, so we've done that for several years.
So, well, we have to, like, forget about Wolzel. Once he gets to twenty, to twenty-five years, he doesn't really use a personal, we have to probably something different for.
Probably appropriate the thing ahead. Um, and he doesn't drive for us as much anymore, but he's still, he's still on payroll, so maybe still, uh, you know, keep him on the list of, of service to the district. But yeah, that'll probably be, uh, something to, to consider as we kind of do every year, just a little bit. Um, we did hire Candace Coover as a para. She's a certified teacher, so that's a pretty good get. Uh, and so she'll be, uh, valuable to the district. And from time to time, if necessary, be able to use her as a substitute teacher, uh, and then Jen will scramble to find a para sub, you know, if, if necessary. Uh, we're still, uh, uh, we also have Patty Knock, who's gonna work as an accompanist for us, uh, in Mrs. Kraus. Uh, basically now is, as an elementary music teacher, when scheduling, timing doesn't work for her to be accompanist for the high school. So, uh, Patty Knock is gonna do that for us, so we're happy to have her, um, kind of on, on staff in the similar capacity that Jen has been for many years. Um, we, we're still searching for one person to help with the kitchen. Linda has a meeting tomorrow with an interested candidate. Um, and also maybe a sped driver. We, we still want to, to take our one student to Clearwater, so, uh, that, that would be, just be a, a van to Clearwater and back every day. So, um, Bob and I have a plan until we get somebody, um, somebody for that on a permanent basis. Uh, Louise has been driving to Norfolk for us for years. I mean, what a blessing. Uh, you know, that has been just to have somebody loyal to take our, our, our kids to school in Norfolk every day. Um, we, uh, rate funds are for rural, rural education, uh, schools, so we have twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars in rate funds. Um, that gets sunk into, um, uh, teacher salary. Uh, we, we use that for one of our additional teachers that we have. We have three additional teachers that were class. We use that for one of our additional teachers that we have, we have three additional teachers that were class size reduction. And that's what qualifies us for those funds. Our alumni golf tournament was this last weekend, was spectacular, always, always awesome to see alumni come home and enjoy time together. So it's our fifth one, and the Education Foundation used those funds for scholarships. They're in a position to significantly increase either the amount or the number of scholarships they provide for students. And they'll be expanding into providing grants for teachers. So teachers, if there's something special, unique in their classroom that they would like, that might be slightly beyond the scope of administrative approval, a little more of a want than a need, than they could apply for a grant with the Education Foundation. And so some details of that are being put together, and so I'll be able to share that with you at a later time. Administrative days, I think, those are sessions that I attended. And there's modifications that balance, it's time to start the new year. That's all I have for you. Yes, 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 of course. I think the membership meetings to the Nebraska Association of School Boards, I think it's a great opportunity. An evening at Northeast, evening college. So on the thirty-first, I think I'll probably start bugging you a little bit to get a commitment to go to Norfolk. It's a good chance for us to go together, board members from around the area, obviously, a lot of folks that you would know from other communities. A couple of sessions that you get to attend, networking dialogue with other board members, really a good, simple little opportunity. I think that's a Wednesday night, is that right, thirty-first? Correct me. But please look at your calendars, but I might start to bug you for a commitment here in the next few days.
It is Wednesday.
Yeah, I recommend that we all go as close as we can. All right, anybody have anything else? If not, your turn, thank you all.